2022, if we could first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first we'll start with public comment. Come on up, say your name, and there'll be three minutes.
Mary Alice Ladue, Bloomfield Township President. Here we go again with this administration working to tap taxpayers for unnecessary water fees and meters that will charge residents more. Where is the discussion with residents on how to spend our DARPA money? You do not want a discussion because you have predetermined outcome and an agenda to stick it to taxpayers with higher water fees. The smart meters that were installed still have plenty of life to them, yet you want to take them out and charge people based on pipe size. This is wrong on multiple levels and not standard in the utility industry. No one charges by the number of outlets in a home or the number of appliances. Beyond a set fee for all customers, DTE and Consumers Energy charge based on usage. Plain, simple, and fair. But Bloomfield Township does not care about fair, especially when it doesn't impact any one of the seven elected officials. All of you received reductions in your overhead costs because you have pipe sizes that are one inch or less. I have a 1.5-inch pipe and am paying twice as much so that you get a reduction. This is wrong. Despite a directed letter to Olivia, I received no response to my inquiry as to why Martin Brooks' 15 units of water for the second quarter and my eight units resulted in the same bill cost. It is fundamentally wrong for some residents to be paying much more for an infrastructure cost simply because of a pipe that they had no decision in. It was there when I moved. Okay, the board should not spend a penny on water meters until you fix the gross flaw with charging people by pipe size. Raff Tellis sold you a manufactured reason to charge some people more for infrastructure costs that have nothing to do with true costs. Since none of you were impacted by the decision and you only benefited, you voted for the faulty logic and are clueless as to the impact on homeowners. Fix the unfair system now. Oops, I'm sorry.
My name is Markin Tokley. I'm a Precinct Three Republican delegate, reelected this year. My first public comment is about the new meter payments, $8 million, and that excludes the cost of the meters. How are we going to pay for it? I don't want higher rates. Why aren't you guys approving new rates based on the $8 million? And that's at the low end. $3.5 million was the low bid for the new meters, right? That's not in, nowhere in there. Wasn't in the total. Why was it removed? What are the new rates going to look like? A few weeks ago, I asked the township to redress the water and sewer quarterly results, April through June. I handed all of you a handout. It included expenses approved by the township, and they're only $70,000 worth of non-water cost purchases and sewer treatment. Yet we received this in the mail claiming that operational expenses are going to be over $70 million, so why is it only $70,000? Did you guys redress it, or did you just put it on the back burner so you can hide whether or not you've been collecting extra funds for the last quarter? How do we know if you don't redress it? My next comment is regarding public safety and the AEPAD funding of public safety. Two years ago, in the April 1, 2020 actuarial, what it showed was public safety was funded at 7.3%, and the township excluding cable studio building inspection, water and sewer was also funded at 7.3%. The split on the liabilities for the town portion versus public safety was about 24 to 76%. Since then, the payments and the contributions of $1.25 million have been split at 60-40. This has resulted in a significant increase, according to the new actuarial, in the township funding of 22.8%, while public safety is only at 9.8%. Why are we doing this to public safety, our police and fire? We have $1.25 million, which has to be contributed. We have approximately $10 million going over to public safety. I hope the township will redress this and adjust the budget. The current liability actuary determined contribution are at a 20% to 80% split. Maybe we should put the full $1.25 million into public safety and protect their retirement. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Kirk Branick, and I live at 1642 Hamilton Drive in Bloomfield Hills. I'm the president of the Square Lake Association, but also the owner of the property that is really directly across from the proposed lot combination on Klingon Smith. We're also the owners of Outlet B, which is a property on the other side of the lot that they're proposing that has lake access. Outlet B is the lake bottom land of Square Lake and is 38 acres. And there's a long story behind our purchase of that, but we own the lake bottom land. But I'm speaking on behalf of the association tonight. We've looked at the proposal. We like the Klingon Smith proposal. I know Mark Pelear personally. The only caveat I would add is in 1990, this township was involved in a very big lawsuit that we were also involved in, that's a landmark decision on reparian rights. And it's basically an ordinance that you have in effect. It was Square Lake Hills Condominium Association versus Bloomfield Township. The township prevailed with our help, and you have the ability to regulate the health, safety, and welfare of Square Lake. And there's a long story behind why that ordinance was put into effect, but that ordinance allows one powerboat over five horsepower if you have more than 250 feet. The people today that will be coming before you actually, that is proposing, only have 140 feet, so we just want to make sure from an association perspective, they've had what they've always had from a boatwright perspective, given your ordinance, which is one powerboat over five horsepower. And the other thing we want to make sure of is that the only property that's going to be cleared is the property that they own. I understand a park is going to be created, easement to the county, but we've been very involved with the township over the years to protect Square Lake. We're supportive of their proposal, but we want to ensure those two items are in fact codified with whatever agreement is reached. And that's really what I have to say for tonight. I'll stick around. We have another, there's another lot combination on the agenda. I don't have anything to say on that. We'll let that take its course, but thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Yeah, close public comment. Next, we'll go on to approving the board minutes from August 22nd. We've all had a chance to look them over, unless there's any changes or comments, I'd look for a motion. Motion by Treasurer Keeps.
Support.
Support by Trustee Showstack. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is to approve the board study session minutes of September 6, 2022, which was the first of many ARPA discussions. Unless we have any changes or suggestions, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is presentation of the proclamation designating September 11 through the 17th, 2022, as Patriot Week in Bloomfield Township. And this year, we're going to have Trustee Showstack present.
Thank you Supervisor Walsh. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce for the board's consideration a proposal naming this week, which began yesterday, September 11th, which is of course the anniversary of the September 11 terrorist attacks, through September 17th, which is the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution as Patriot Week here in Bloomfield Township. You know, there's a lot of talk lately. We've got a very divided or divisive body politic, and I think it's important that we take a minute and recognize that, you know, we are a nation of laws. We are a nation that has a bedrock constitution that we follow and that we all have taken an oath to support and defend. And so I hope that my colleagues will join me in naming September 11 through 17th Patriot Week in Bloomfield Township.
Do you want to read the proclamation?
Oh, sure. So, Michigan Patriot Week, September 11 through 17th, 2022. Whereas Bloomfield Township has traditionally joined countless jurisdictions and organizations across this great state and nation in recognizing September 11 through 17th as Patriot Week, and whereas the United States Senate and Michigan Senate adopted resolutions to recognize Patriot Week, and whereas throughout our country's history, people in our great state and nation have worked together to both preserve and expand freedom and liberty for all Americans, and whereas America has endured through times of turmoil and peace, carrying our nation through the darkest days of history and strengthening our commitment to the ideals upon which our country was founded, and whereas in great reverence to the victims of the attacks on September 11, 2001, and in recognition of the signing of the Constitution on September 17, 1787, Patriot Week is a time to celebrate the principles set forth by our founding fathers, as well as the countless patriots, vital documents, speeches, and other symbols that helped make America the great nation it is today. And whereas a deepening appreciation for those ideals will help guarantee America's spirit of freedom and liberty. And now therefore be it resolved that the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees hereby designates September 11 through 17th, 2022, as Patriot Week. We encourage all residents to renew their appreciation and understanding of America's spirit and reflect on the importance of patriotism to America's past, present, and future. And I'd make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Motion by Trustee Showstack. Support by Trustee Fekki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is to consider the award of a meter replacement project contract, and we have Director Noah Maholsky here today from our DPW.
Good evening again. Okay, um, it's on. Don't have a problem being heard usually, so. I want to give you some background on the program and kind of the structure of it before I begin in earnest. So it's important to know that the meter program involves a few different facets of operations, and that kind of comes from the makeup of the meter, the line and the meter and the succession of that coming into the building. So there's a service line on the back end of the stop box that feeds the water into the people's homes. In this state, because of weather, the meters are inside. I wish we were in a warmer climate where we could put them outside by the curb, but we, so all our meters are inside. So you have that meter in the line, and then on down the line, that meter talks to a sending unit that sends out the signal to then get the meter reading, okay? And right now, we're in a radio read environment here in Bloomfield Township where we can drive by on the street and collect the reads. What we want to do is move towards for monthly billing and usage-based billing and all those things we talked about as far as rates. We want to move to getting more robust data through the use of a cellular network and a cellular endpoint instead of that radio read. So additionally, this project kind of is going to involve some state regulations where we need to get into the home as well to do a test on the service line material coming into the home. We would have had to do this anyway, so we're coupling these programs together for economy of scale. The hardest part will be getting into the homes of these people, so if we can do that once, satisfy multiple regulations, that's how we're going to handle the program. So as far as meter programs, industry standards are, so our current meter stock is a mutating disc stock where there's a device that is moved by the water, and then that measures the flow, right? But as any moving parts wear out over time, so meters become slower, and so we don't get proper accounting for the water used on the system. So industry standards tell us from 15 years of age on a meter to 20 years of age, we would make the money back on replacing that meter by replacing it at 15 years. Another way of saying that, if we waited till 20 years, over that five-year period, we would have lost the cost to replace the meter by not measuring the water through the system, okay? So that's kind of a trigger point. It's not that simple. 15 years for a low, low user, you won't have the wear on the meter, so you also take into account a million gallons usage, make sure you're getting the usage through the meter. So it's kind of a double-pronged standard that we go by here. Our stock in particular, we have 18,000 meters. That includes some secondary meters, commercial meters, that type of thing. 52% of those are over 15 years, or 15 years or older in our stock right now. So what does that mean? We've got a big backlog. We have not had a meter replacement program in many years, and so we have a glut of meters that it's time for them to be replaced. Talking about the multi-year kind of format of this project, in the bid tab, we bid this out by unit costs, and then in the bid tab, we extrapolated that over the multi-year program that, you know, by our 18,000 meters. And so, you know, if we chose to do this in one year, you see the big number there, it's like $7.9 million or whatever it is, we have to parcel this out year to year. Many reasons why. A, $7, $8 million hit to the budget, not prudent planning. You don't want to replace meters that don't need it yet, right? So you don't want to do this in a one year. You want to do this pragmatically over, in reality, you want to split it into a 15-year program, you know, so you're only replacing a minimal amount each year. And we'll get there as we kind of develop the program forward. Additionally, another concern at the front end is the lead service line delineation. That project, we're under a deadline from the state of Michigan. We're four years ahead of it, but we want to get those all done, get our report into them, and we're really looking and doing a random survey of our population to see if there are any lead lines that we are not aware of that are out there. Additionally, the push for monthly billing is critical, so we're going to start attacking the 15-year and older meters, but we're also going to start installing the cellular endpoints in a quicker fashion to allow us to start getting the data back, to start looking at usage-based billing, to start looking at leak detection for residents, to give residents the ability to go onto a customer portal and see their data real time, those things. We want to push that and accelerate the cellular end of things. So that's kind of the three prongs of the program that we got going. Really, the cellular endpoint, we've had discussion in the past about building towers in the township. It was estimated at one point that 19, anywhere from 19 to 32 towers would be required within Bloomfield Township due to topography. That's why we're going with the cellular option in this case. And in fact, the low bidder in the project who we're recommending has a very much more robust system than the second lowest bidder, and they have, basically their procs have been proven in the market. So generally, the program's going to focus on the lead service lines first, old meters first, and then switching out as many of the cellular endpoints as possible under the budget amount. This year in our budget, we have $300,000. We're planning on pushing that up till the end, I mean, we're already in October at this point. We've got to meet, get contracts signed, so we're planning on basically kicking off this program seamlessly into next year's as well. So a budget ask and the rate, when we're setting the rates, we'll kind of develop the program for next year and tell us how much we need. We're going to have the contractor over here, Ryan is in the audience. We're going to have him take a look at what we're going to need in future years to, again, hone this program into a multi-year program that's flattened out like it should be. So that's why there's a not to exceed price in there. We don't exactly know. I can't tell you how much water people are going to use, how many endpoints we can actually get in the homes and that right now, so we're going to just push it up to that not to exceed amount of 300,000. Then we'll develop the program and get in the rates a budget amount for each future year of the program. So that is it in a nutshell. Let me know if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I just had a question with regard to if we wanted to do monthly billing, we, every user in the township would have to have this new meter?
No, there's a couple different methods. We could throw manpower at it.
Okay.
And just go use our current system, go achieve the reads. We've had a posting on the township website for a meter reader to perform, our plan was beginning of this fiscal year, hire two to three meter readers and achieve that. Nobody's applied in the last six months. It's a pseudo-part-time position, you know, so the feeling is we're going to start with our highest users, start switching out the endpoints. So theoretically, two to three years, we should be able to get the data we need. Start collecting that data, you know, we're going to need some elapsed time of that data to give the ratemakers enough math and statistics to go on, but that's save the manpower, save building a bunch of structures, that type of stuff. This is the quickest way to get us there, and we are going to accelerate that function of the program. Once we run out of old meters to change out, or in, basically in conjunction with that change out, we're going to be putting in these cellular, you know, endpoints as well.
And you'd agree that this, these new cellular meters would help us also as far as determining usage?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're just a lot more accurate.
Yeah, so they ping a lot. The data flow is much more robust with them than what we're getting with our current system. Plus, it'll interface with the portal that'll allow the resident to take a look at their usage, and the types of meters with the devices that we're going to are going to have very, like, they can tell if there's a continuous slow usage of water, which indicates a leak. They can tell you over a given time period, you know, if we set parameters, if they exceeded that, and it'll tell you right away if there's a leak. So instead of waiting three months for our billing data to come in, then we start making calls to the resident that, hey, there's something going on here. We'll find that out nearly instantaneously, like next day, or whenever the parameters kind of tip the scale and let us know. Additionally, in the future, we'll be able to utilize the portal to send out like boil water notices, that type of stuff. So there's a regulatory side to this. I don't think the DEQ would quite take it right now, but I think you're probably reaching as many people that are reading a newspaper, you know? So the kick will be to get people to sign onto that portal for their own good and some sort of education effort to make that happen, so.
I just had a question. Pretty, it seems pretty obvious that it'll be all automatic electronic, the cellular information will come in, so that will take away the need for the drive-by reads. So that should save us?
Yes.
Some manpower, some money in that respect.
Yep. Basically, we'd redeploy that one person who has to take a couple days out of the month at this point, because even though we do quarterly billing, we're rotating, so we're always billing each month, so they'll be reassigned to like our televising and videoing, our videoing and cleaning, and our other core tasks that the state has some, you know, some orders out for us on, so. And these, importantly, this project was ran completely in-house before, and it took years and years and years. I'm still cleaning up skeletons from those closets from that time, where they couldn't get in, people refused to let people into the house. You know, I have the ability to shut off water in those cases, so I've been trying, you know, we can't like start another program without getting everybody else in the line from the last one, right? And I expect high compliance rate with this because, you know, I'm not out there, I don't want to waste the effort on this, so I will use the threat of shutting off water if I need to, so.
But that's a last.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
Just to make sure we know that's a last.
You get into a life, health, and safety issue at that point. Our ordinances are written that way just for that reason. You know, you become insolvent if you don't apply those standards.
But you have touched people many times before you've ever gotten to that. Just so you guys know, like, he sends out letters, they make phone calls, they knock on doors, so just so everyone knows.
Yeah, you're talking years of contacts and multiple, honestly, it's several contacts on their end before it even gets to a letter from me that starts to get a little more like, we need to get into your home, you know? And then there's three or four from me with, and again, if we got people that are making contacts, I can't because I'm in California or whatever during this time period, we're completely good with that. It's, you know, it's multiple years of non-contact where we get to that level, so.
Noah, so are these meters becoming more the standard in the industry?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of, I'm aware, you know, there's a few, it depends on your topography and that type of stuff and what you have in place, right? There's some communities out there, Wayne County, Northern Wayne County communities, they only need two towers to serve their entire population. That's because they're flat as a pancake, right? Not up here, not our situation, right? So then you start to look at numbers of towers. Do you want to go that way? My feeling, I laid this out to the board last year, was that easement costs, cost to me, my, basically the theory is if Verizon is paid to do this activity because it's their livelihood, I think they can do it better than Bloomfield Township on the scale as far as managing towers and a cellular network, that type of stuff, so.
You also have the look of those towers too.
Right.
When you think about 19 towers, it would change the topography for sure.
I don't think it would work.
Yeah, costly and unattractive.
Right, I mean, and we would try to get on poles that are already existing, which you can make agreements with MDOT and RCOC, but we would have to build quite a few of them, you know? So it's definitely the way to go.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I just want to go over, make sure I understand the terminology. So an endpoint is what? Endpoint is the cellular connection device that sits directly with the meter?
It's the talker, so it speaks the data to the system and back to us, and it's on the outside of the home.
And then how does it connect to the meter?
There's a wire that's already in place.
Okay.
For the current existing meter, that it's a three-wire system that basically will utilize that existing wire if it's okay and connect the cell. So when we ramp up the cellular endpoints, they won't even have to go into the house. We'll just change the endpoint out on the outside of the home. It's, the R900s that are radio reads right now, another problem with doing this program internally is our employees listened to people and tried to make accommodations when they didn't want the reader on the outside of the home. This contractor will be less apt to do that because they know more tricks to get it on the outside of the home. They know kind of the game, and we got to force them to be on the outside. That being said, they should work better, I've been told, than even the radio read on the inside of the house, but that's how it works. So the meter talks to the endpoint, which sends the data to us.
Okay, so for somebody who got a meter, let's say, two years ago, we don't need to change out their meter, we just need to change out their endpoint?
Correct.
Okay, so on your bid tab sheet here, it says approximate cost for total meter change out, you know, $8 million, $9 million. That's if we swapped out every meter that we have.
We wanted to give you an idea of, okay, it's only a few dollars difference in the meter cost, so we wanted to give you an idea of what this meant over the whole program.
Okay, so are the meters that are going to get installed proprietary to the people that install them?
They are a product that's covered by copyright, but they all speak the same language.
So let's say in two years, SLC Meter no longer exists. We could go to Ferguson or somebody else, and they could put in a meter that may not be the exact same meter, but will be compatible.
Yes, and in fact, these endpoints that we're going to install are going to be talking to Neptune Ferguson meters.
Okay, so are we going to rebid this program every year to make sure we're getting the best prices? Is this a multi-year contract?
It'll be, basically, we're going to redevelop the program because we don't know year five what, what Customer A's usage is going to be throughout the five years of the program. So I can't tell you today what meters I'm going to be taking out in year five of the program. So we have to go back, use the expertise of SLC to design the program as an ongoing relationship. That's why we did the unit cost of the meters with the price increases, much like we do for the solid waste contract, which is a longer, one of these like, you can't switch a solid waste contractor every single year. You can't switch a meter replacement company every single year because you're never going to, you're never going to end, right? And everybody's always And everybody's always going to be chasing their tail on the last program. So as we go through, we're going to have, we're going to develop the next year's program. That'll be part of the rate discussion. And then I'll come to the board with, again, a not to exceed dollar amount that'll be from the rates, so.
But at that point, we're not going to rebid it?
Correct.
We're just going to go with this vendor?
Right.
That you're asking for and then, and, and, and three, say 300,000 divided by these meters, we can fix, you know, whatever it is.
Right, and look at, okay.
800 meters, whatever.
Next year, so we're going to, one thing internally, policy-wise, we're going to focus on commercial accounts in the first year, right? If we want to, and we want to go by districts, so there's five districts, so that we're not billing in District One two different ways, right? So if I go to District Four, which is our commercial accounts, and I can get them all done in a year, that'll drive my budget amount for that year.
Okay.
And make things seem, and in fact, commercial accounts are already billed monthly. So they're our first target to do a little bit of a trial and see how the data looks.
Right, so, you know, to the residents that maybe saw this on the agenda and said, oh my God, they're changing out meters again, we're not, if somebody got a meter in the last five years, they're not getting a new meter.
Correct, I'm not throwing good money after bad.
Right.
And that's the importance of it.
We're just going to go in and change their endpoint?
Correct.
When it comes to time.
And in most cases, right outside, not even go in.
Right, and we don't even need to bother them for that.
Correct, and then we'll start collecting that data. They'll, you know, then the portal will be kind of run out. That'll be the, um, benefit to the residents and the leak detection, all those things. You know, that'll all kind of be.
And the other, and the other thing I'd like confirmation of, and I'm fairly certain, I know the answer to this obviously, is that no one's getting billed for these meters. This is going to be billed as part of the rates, part of our budget. Homeowners who get their meters swapped out, we're not going to show up with a bill.
Correct, this is, this funding is included as part of the rate in any given year. And the 300,000 from this year, uh, is included already in this year's rates.
Okay.
So indirectly, the rate payers are paying for it certainly.
Right, and we have to do those lead line inspections anyway.
And we're hoping that we don't find any more.
That's $2 per, per, and it's only $2 because we don't have to send somebody out special.
Amen, yep.
Okay.
And to your point about some confusion.
I'm done preaching.
I was going to say.
That was a strong one.
To your point about some people might have been confused when they read it, endpoints. I know somebody mentioned like we're charging for every, it's one endpoint per house.
Right, one endpoint, that communicates and it's through, eventually through cellular. And the quality, the quality of the data we're going to get is going to be vastly improved. I love the idea of a portal. I think people are going to really get into that. And the leak detection technology that you mentioned, I think people are really going to get excited about that. As somebody who had a leak this year that cost me $2,000, I can definitely appreciate that.
Yeah, we will know earlier, they will know earlier, and we'll be able to get in front of the.
And for the record, I got no discount.
Exactly.
I paid every penny of that for a leak.
Didn't even ask us for one. To your point, you didn't even ask.
And I didn't, and thank you, and I didn't even ask for one.
Nope.
You know, yeah, looking back on this multi-pronged, it's kind of a benefit in the end, but it creates a little bit of strife on our end. We probably should have hired somebody to come in and design an entire meter replacement program in the beginning of this, right? And paid a company to come in and do it. We didn't do that because I'm young, we can handle it.
So you got this, do it.
Handle it, we're going to do it, right? But the good thing is, now that we've got them on retainer, that's part of their job. So we're going to get it for free now, free, right? But we're going to get that service to design the program going forward, and that's going to help kind of drive this in a future sense.
Right, and, um, well, how would you respond to somebody who says that moving to cellular back, cellular endpoints, uh, may open them up to being tampered with or hacked? Or, you know, may deliver false readings?
No more so than any of the, it's fully encrypted end-to-end.
Okay.
So no more so than any encrypted data they may send already through their phones, such as credit card information or, or whatnot.
Right, and nobody's able to hack in and turn off their meter or something like that?
No, no, that's, that's, you know, and this doesn't create the issues with radio waves that were so much a part of the smart meters of the last generation.
Right.
You know, so, and, you know, I don't know which way this technology is going to go. So once we get through this, it may be the next widget down the road that, you know, creates efficiency and, and creates a better product out there. I'm almost certain something's going to change in the next 10 years, you know, in this realm, so.
Right.
And I'll say, Noah, you got this, you don't need to hire anybody. And then the portal, we're going to try and link to the new app.
Yeah, that's phenomenal, I think that's correct.
So it would be a, a direct link where they get, you know, the pings. So you would have known right away instead of three months later.
Yes.
Great. Um, anybody else have any questions?
No, I'm ready to make a motion, I, go ahead.
So Noah, is there a, do we have a timeframe on the contract?
Well, again, we're going to, we're going to do it as a not to exceed this year, so.
Timeframe.
Like a five-year, you reassess and rebid?
You tell me what usage is going to be. It's really the usage and the progress we can make is going to dictate how long this takes.
So let's say we have an issue with the contractor, can we walk away from the?
Oh yeah, we can always, yes, always do that. I mean, really, it's pricing and increased guarantees over future years.
Okay.
Any quotes we authorize are going to be for the not to exceed amount. So we're not getting even, we're not signing ourselves. We understand this is going to be a multi-year deal, but each, as we refine the program, each one of the rate asks is going to be based on the quote from the preceding year. So we won't, you know, that will develop as we go, you know? The hazard of keeping on switching is three or four meters in your, in your inventory, you got to service all of those until you get them out. Like if you switch in the middle, that type of thing, you're going to have multiple meter brands, which, you know, those issues, so logistical issues.
And some comments were made regarding meter size, the number of, uh, fixtures in the home, um, based on, and I'm just, I think I know the answer to this, but is there an ability to reduce the size of the meter at this point?
It depends, that's a question for a plumber. So we don't get into the number of fixtures, but the standard from the AWA is based on meter size, a meter equivalency unit. The key to understand is when you go from a one inch to a one and a half inch service, it doesn't just add by a factor of 50% how much water can pass through that pipe. And that's what the charge is based on. It's somewhere a factor of three-point something. So it's not a, like, if you go from a one inch to a two inch, it's not just double the water comes through. It's much greater than that in the volume. We don't get into fixtures in the home, that's a plumber and engineering thing when the home was built. Um, they sized it based on, based on their expertise, their engineering standards for the home, three floors, 17 bathrooms, whatever those factors were that made the engineer size it for one and a half inch. So someone has to assure the resident that they're not going to have a dry bathroom up top. So we recommend if they're in that category, they have a plumber look at their situation, determine whether it's feasible. There's some costs for the, um, you know, connecting the actual different size of the meter, but we will give them the other meter as part of this replacement to mitigate that cost, if it's possible. Again, our warning is make sure you talk to a plumber because I don't want a toilet not functioning on the third floor or a shower just dribbling water. I mean, it's, you start to get into those things.
And is that a residence, a licensed plumber has to test that that meter will serve all the fixtures?
Yeah.
Or?
We recommend they enlist a, a, a certified plumber for that, yeah.
Is that required?
It wouldn't be required, um, I don't know. They do have to get a permit from building. So I think a registered plumber has to be on the plumbing permit. So through that way, it would be required. Um, you know, and by that time, they've talked to us four or five times on the phone, and we can, our mantra is to warn, you know, yes, you can do this, we will help you do this, but we need the expert to tell us, you know? Because someone made an educated decision on why that was supposed to be in there.
When, when it was initially installed.
Right, and it's typically not like, oh, one inch is good, let's go one and a half. That's typically not how it works, right? There's some thought and calculations into it, you know?
Appreciate that.
Because it's, you're trying to be as minimal cost as possible to get the performance, right? That's what engineering is all about, so.
So regardless of the number of units that they're using at a current basis, it's really what could they be using? And getting to the second or third floor in terms of pressure and the size of the, uh, fixtures and plumbing is how it's sized, correct?
Yeah, I like to say it's dynamic, right? It's more than just, we can swap it out and mechanically it'll, it'll fit in that area, right? There's more to it than that, so. Especially here where we have widely varying households. But typically, they're bigger in the one and a half inch category, so. But there are neighbors. Homes were built by different builders, were built at different times, less bathrooms, more bathrooms. There are neighbors that are right next to each other that one has a one-inch meter and the other one would have a one and a half, you know? That's definitely possible.
And again, just, I, I think I heard this correctly, but if people have two meters in their homes or more, there's one endpoint? And there's one communicating, is that correct?
No, there'd, uh.
An endpoint per meter or?
One per meter, yeah. So that would be like our secondary meter, uh.
We have two.
Customers, yeah, they would need to send the data for both meters. They can't distinguish between the two.
More than, it almost sounded like she thought there was an endpoint at each fixture when she was talking.
Okay, thank you for the background.
No problem.
And then knowing that people are all kind of probably thinking the same thing of it's the open-endedness, uh, is there a possibility of doing this for a five-year? And then if it's good, rebidding it then or?
Oh yeah, if, once this program is done, that's what's, we will get through this glut of the program, then we'll basically redesign for the future years and bid that out as a full package. We just can't tell you right now, we don't have the usage data, we don't have the history. And in fact, it's more comfortable to, for me to like not pot commit to something five years out at this point. You know, this will change between, and I want to walk you guys along through that process.
Okay.
So I'll be back to you, you know, that's not going to mean that I'm not going to be back to you getting approval for that type of stuff, you know what I mean? But it's, it just, the low bidder is the low bidder at this point, so.
Just have one last question. Um, you, you touched on, which I know is really important, and I was glad to get the clarification, that if somebody had a meter five years ago or even 10 years ago, those aren't going to be replaced right away because they're still good.
Right, they're still.
So do you have any, just a guesstimate, I'm not going to hold you to it, but is it 40% of our meters are newer or 40% of our meters are older or?
Um, I kind of, we'd say 52% of our meters are 15 years or older. That's approximately 10,000 meters. So the first year with our budget amount, we're probably only going to be able to do 500 meters and then focus on the lead service lines that have to be done and the cellular endpoints. Then in years two to five, we're going to aim for like 2,000, 2,500 meters a year. That gives you like an $800,000 budget within the account, and that'll be kind of flat, two to five. And then the next five-year cycle, we're going to look to flatten that out across that cycle.
Well, and by the time we get to the end of five years, those ones that were 10 to 15 years older now, now going to come on the list.
And we'll plan that naturally. Again, I'd like to see this be a flattened, you know, expense throughout the system, and it's easier to attack like, let's say, you know, 1,200 a year of our 18,000, split it up by the, you know, it's easier to attack and, and get success on a smaller sample group, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I guess I just want to say one more thing. So, because I have, and this might not be exactly related to this program, but it's at least tangentially related, so that's why I want to bring it up now. There has been feedback with regard to, um, is there really equity if it's not for doing it? Okay, what you can potentially get through your pipes versus what you're actually getting through your pipes? So if we did want to move more towards usage-based and away from the meter equivalent, then this is going to help us to get there.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Getting that more robust usage data, data will allow us to kind of determine patterns that allow us to set, instead of it being, um, more based on a something that is finite, a pipe coming in, it would be based on tiers, like when you're DTE, if you're over 200 and, 200 kilowatts, you start getting charged a higher rate, that's where the equity will come in, right? But we need that usage data to set where those levels are. And there's still going to be winners and losers, but it will be shaded even more so towards the high-usage pays higher. So that, this was like a first step and, right? Because, you know, in the past, it was everybody pays the same. So the, this MEU structure was a big change in the rate environment and tried to bring that equity, um, you know, the usage-based data will bring that equity even more, so.
That's where this actually came from, was all of the discussions that we had about tiered and usage, was we didn't have the infrastructure. So that's why Noah was tasked to doing this on his own and not finding a consultant.
Well, and it's important to note, all the other utilities have a ready-to-serv in there as well in addition to the usage fee. So it's, um, you know, they may call it distribution or power supply recovery. That's giving them the raw materials that they need to serve you, right? And that's ready to serve, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ready to make the motion? And I'm really, I really like the program because it incorporates a lot of what the board has discussed in the past year, and as far as what our goals and objectives are, whether it's monthly billing, which we had a lot of discussion on, trying to detect leaks, which is certainly important, having the ability to establish a water portal, you know, for the water rates, having flexibility, be able to grow and build depending on technology or if we change our, just our way of wanting to look at, um, water rates. So this gives us a lot of flexibility in that regard, and I think it's, uh.
We're listening.
I can tell. Thank you very much, and I make the motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your work on that, I appreciate it. So next, we have director Patty Volker here for our introduction of the lot split request for 1836 Del Rose Drive.
Okay, so tonight, I'm for you with a lot split request for 1836 Del Rose. The property owner is looking to demolish the existing, um, structure, residence, and there's also a shed, accessory structure on the property to accommodate the splitting of the parcel into two, um, single-family home sites. I think we're familiar with the location. Um, it is a Zoned R1 single-family. And then a little visit down the street. This is the corner of Del Rose and Bloomfield Drive. With a couple of extra shots at the intersection now down from Del Rose and then farther going down Bloomfield Drive. So this is the existing location of the, the residence. Um, obviously closer proximity to the street. Um, then there's a shed to the farther rear. Uh, again, the description of the parcel. And I'll be, this is their proposed split. So as we review this request before you, based on the standards in our ordinance, uh, we note that the survey that's been submitted does divide the two lots with parcel A fronting on Bloomfield Drive and the corner parcel B fronting on Bloomfield Drive and Del Rose. Each residential lot meets the minimum 16,000 square feet per lot area in this R1 district by parcel A containing 38,768 square feet and parcel B containing 43,995 square feet. In the R1 district, the minimum lot width is 100 feet with sewers, and a sanitary sewer is proposed for each lot. And the setbacks that we determine, uh, the lot width that we determine by this front setback, both of which are meeting the criteria. And each proposed parcel meets that minimum 100-foot criteria. The parcel as presented is compliant with the lot depth to lot width ratio. And as we look at the property as it relates to the existing lot width and land area in the area within 500 feet of the parcel, by conducting a survey and analysis of the, um, properties, we find that the average of, for Bloomfield Drive and Del Rose is either point one, point, point 4.7 or point 8.3 for a land area. Um, both of these cases are exceeding that criteria, parcel A being one point, excuse me, 0.89 acres and parcel B being 1.04 acres. And then looking at the lot width and looking at the averages along Bloomfield Drive and Del Rose, the, uh, properties as presented, parcel A exceeds the lot width average along, um, Bloomfield Drive and Del Rose, both by showing the 128 lot width for parcel A and 190.6 feet for parcel B. The treasurer's office reports the taxes have been paid and both parcels are fronting on a street or road. So as this has been reviewed by your engineering environmental service department, uh, they did note that there is public water and sanitary sewer available to the existing parcel. Both resultant parcels will be required to pay the water capital and the direct connection charges and the sanitary sewer debt and direct connection charges at the time of building permit submittal. The survey that's been submitted by the applicant shows the building envelopes of identifying front, side, and rear setbacks, all in compliant with the R1 district. front, side and rear setbacks, all in compliant with the R1 district. And upon review of the different departments, we find that the engineering environmental service department reported that a tree permit will be required for proposed tree removal and the tree replacement will also be required for both lots. The existing drainage pattern shall be incorporated into any proposal for development of these two lots. If there's any low spots that may collect stormwater from the surrounding area, that'll be duly noted. And the applicant is responsible for determining if there's any wetlands in existence on the premises. And both police and fire had no objections to this proposal. The township board this evening is being asked to evaluate how the proposed division will be consistent and compatible with the existing lots, parcels and uses in this neighborhood. And again, the roads as, the lots as fronting on both Del Rose and Bloomfield Drive are public roads. And the configuration as identified in the survey is rectangular in form. So, that completes the analysis of the standards that are under consideration. And the board this evening is being asked to determine whether there was sufficient information for you to be able to set a public hearing date for a future township board meeting, of which then it would be due notice.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just read the whole packet. It does seem to address everything that's required under the statute in order to approve a lot split. And I might recommend that October 10th be a date that's set for the public hearing, as that would provide a sufficient time to provide the mailing notice and the publication notice as required by statute within the timelines required.
That's acceptable, thank you. Would you like to make that motion?
I move the township board set a public hearing to consider this lot split request of October 10th, 2022.
If I could say, I believe that's a holiday. I believe October 10th is a religious holiday. That's why our meeting is October 12th. Just off the top of my head, just off the top of my head, I believe that that was a calendar error that we caught.
No, that's, that's in the end of September.
September 1.
The end of September 1 was changed, but-
And October 10th, right.
October 10th is Columbus Day, but we don't take that. Yeah, the September 1 was moved to Wednesday for the Jewish holiday.
The end of October.
But Columbus Day, we don't.
You and I talked about it because-
About the September 1.
No, I was saying it was, I was letting you know it was October because I changed up plan for that. Okay, well, maybe I've got that wrong.
Yeah, it's the next meeting, the second September meeting that is moved to later in the, not Monday, but moved to later in the week.
Right, for Rosh Hashanah.
Wednesday, September 28th.
Yeah. If no one has any other questions, we have a motion from-
I'll support.
Support by trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you. Thank you, and you can stay up there for the next one. So, next we have introduction of lot split request for 2171 to 2173 Klingon Smith. Thank you.
Okay, so again, this is an introduction. So, we're asking the board to consider the information in your packet and any discussion you may have to be able to set a public hearing date to a future township board meeting. So, this is the property that we're familiar with. It is 2171 to 2173 Klingon Smith and also parts of lots two to five of Square Lake Country Club. They're seeking approval to demolish the existing structures and the existing appurtenance in order to subdivide the parcel into three single-family residential lots. The property, 3.48 acres, has frontage on Klingon Smith in the area west of Telegraph and north of Square Lake. Real familiar with the property. Frontage on Square Lake. Another view. So, the applicant has provided a survey that I will show you briefly that looks to consolidate the parcels, the numerous parcels that you're seeing configured in the red, to create three single-family parcels in the R1 district. This area provides a little bit more detail of where the structures are located and primarily their access from Klingon Smith adjacent to the, to Square Lake. The overall split is being presented in this fashion. This survey shows the parcels then being subdivided into three separate lots. This is parcel A, which would be the northerly, defining the area as 34,000 square feet approximately. And then there's parcel B, shown to be 40,722 square feet. And then parcel C being 43,106 square feet. The prop, this proposal also includes the residual park area, which is on the west side of the Klingon Smith Drive abutting the subject parcel. And it contains, it's primarily, let me just get this calculation for you. It's approximately 3900 square feet. And we'll review that a little bit more in detail as we go forward. So, the proposal is to, to create three single-family residential parcels, all having frontage on Klingon Smith. The minimum lot width for the R1 district is 100 feet with sewers. A sanitary sewer is proposed for each lot. By definition, that lot width is determined by the front on the public or private street as measuring from the front setback. And each of these proposed parcels comply with that minimum lot width of 100 feet. The roadway that runs along the parcel, so in this instance, I'll let me just go back to the main overall split. The Klingon Smith that runs along the property has not been formally dedicated to the road commission. So, there is a requirement to have them proceed with the documentation necessary, the road commission of Oakland County, to dedicate that right-of-way as a public roadway thereby, that will address some of the comments from our engineering environmental service department as far as having the public utilities in a public right-of-way. If not, then easements would have to be attained through any development of this parcel. But going back to the proposal, again, taking the acreage and dividing it up into three parcels, all of which are exceeding the minimum lot width for the R1, or lot area and lot width for the R1 district, but we're looking at the average within 500 feet. The average along Klingon Smith was 26,696 square feet. And each of these lots are exceeding that average. And also, the lot width average is 119 feet. And again, all of the parcels are exceeding that 119 feet to comply with that criteria. The taxes have been paid for this property. All of the properties about a street or road, in this instance, there'll be a formal application to the road commission so that it can comply with the criteria from the engineering environmental service department, or there'd have to be a easement document that would be submitted upon developing of the parcels. The proposed do have access to public water and sanitary sewer. The resultant parcels will be required to pay the water capital and direct connection charges and the sanitary sewer debt and direct connections at the time of submission of a building permit. And as I showed you earlier, going to the configuration, each of these parcels are able to provide the minimum front, side and rear setbacks of the R1 district, allowing it to be a buildable lot. The proposed designated park area, let me go back to that, has approximately 140 feet of lake frontage along Square Lake Road. And it should be noted that pursuant to chapter 40, section 40-51, not more than one boat shall be launched and interdocked adjacent to a separate lake frontage. Therefore, only one boat shall be launched and interdocked at the designated park area along Square Lake. And in reviewing this proposal with our various departments, the assessor noted that the proposed lots would not suffer any additional exterior obsolescence due to this new lot configuration. Additionally, it was noted that the park will have its own parcel ID number, yet the value of that park parcel will be added to only the other three lots because they are the sole beneficiaries of that lakefront lot. And the engineering environmental service department recommended approval subject to the dedication of the public right-of-way or providing easements for the township's public water main and public sanitary sewer. So, the board's being asked to consider and evaluate how the proposed division will be consistent and compatible with the existing lots, parcels and uses of the neighborhood. And the proposed configuration of parcels A, B and C are generally rectangular in form. So, with that, I've introduced the lot split request before you this evening and asking you to consider setting a public hearing date.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I mean, I know we're going to debate it more when we do public hearings, but the private park parcel that's going to be jointly owned by the other three parcels or who's going to own that?
That's correct.
Jointly owned.
That's correct.
Okay.
Like they have at the, like Wing Lake has an HOA parcel that people can come, but that's why we're making it very clear, they don't get to all have boats.
So, who actually owns it? I mean, does the HOA own it in that case? You said the HOA has, like, I know there are private beaches around some of these lakes that HOAs own.
On that specific one, we'll have to ask the assessing who does, but I know that there's like things like that where there's one that it's paid for by a group and they all have access to it.
Actually, my HOA owns some properties, so I mean, it's, but-
They can't each have a boat. And we want to say that so many times so that if they come and ask us, it has been said, we all know they don't all have boats.
And that's going to be my second question because you talked about the boat and Mr. Brannick talked about the boat.
Correct, yeah.
So, it's going to be jointly owned by the three parcels, but between them, they can only have one powerboat.
Maybe they could get a pontoon where they could all hang out together because there will be one boat. What's that?
Over five horsepower, right. You can have small-
Yeah.
News are okay.
Right.
Kayak.
Kayaks, canoes.
No jet skis.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm clear on that. I don't know, is anyone else?
Anyone else have any questions?
Then I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date, same, say 1, the 10th?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, October 10th.
Support.
Wait, do you have a question?
Can you double check? Because he has the 12th also. I've never seen this moved for Columbus Day.
I had an email, it's not for Columbus Day, it's Secoat. And I had an email with you and you said, why is it wrong on the township calendar? And you told me it was the 12th, so I booked something on the 10th.
Secoat's not even showing up on Google though, that's weird.
Yeah, I'm very confused because you and I had an email exchange, so I was sure it was the 12th.
About the September one, I know.
No, October.
I found our email about September.
No, 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 no.
It was October. Take a look at the email.
I can only find the email of September.
Yes, okay, it is Secoat, but, but the three of us who would be, don't have an issue with keeping the meeting on Monday.
But we, we usually don't do it necessarily just for the board so much as also the community. So, maybe we can talk-
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, what was the calendar that we approved?
We approved the 10th.
We approved the 10th.
The Monday, the Monday as the date for the-
I can't, I didn't want to sit here on my phone, but you and I had, it was specifically October because I did not ask about, September was already changed for the holiday, but Monday was not. And you connected to cable and said, you know, where did I see that calendar that was wrong, that it should have been the 12th, so I-
Which one did we all approve in the minutes?
The only, the only meeting that we moved from the normal second and fourth Monday is the upcoming one for September, which was moved to Wednesday.
Website does say October 12th, actually.
Yeah, it does.
Because that's what I told you and the website said the 10th. And I said, well, that's Secoat. And I had a potential personal conflict and I wanted to know.
My question isn't that so much as what did we approve when we did the meetings? Because maybe I was wrong. Because we used to do Secoat, but if we're not doing it, what did we approve?
Initially, I think it said the 10th on the website, that's why I asked.
I'm okay keeping it the 12th because-
Is there going to be sufficient time to notice for October 10th or October 12th?
Yes.
How, how about if we do the 12th? Because if it's already been on the website, if people are already used to it and they, we've done it, we can talk about changing holidays next year, but this is something that we typically do, do go around. I mean, it is, it is something that I know for the last few years, we have skipped that day.
We have not moved for Secoat.
Just this year was the first time. As a trustee for four years, we did.
We have in the past, we have in the past, but I think in the, in the past, we, it was the, we did it when it was the only holiday that was affected, when, when Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur were not affected for meetings or were not affecting meetings. But, I mean-
Well, that's what, I brought it up because I had a potential personal conflict and I saw it was Secoat. And I know that we often move it for the holidays and I contacted you and that's why the website now says the 12th. That's why I'm totally confused. Yeah, because you contacted cable to fix the calendar. It did say, it did say the 10th.
It did say the 10th.
It did say the 10th initially, and I noticed it was a conflict with Secoat and I emailed you and you emailed-
And I'm saying I might have made a mistake if we didn't approve, if that's not what the board approved.
Yeah, I don't know that.
And we wouldn't, then I shouldn't have moved it to the 12th. What did, can you go to the meeting minutes to see what should have been approved?
What we could do for tonight is just approve or set the scheduled public hearings on both these items for the first meeting in October.
That would work. That works regardless of the date.
And then we're going to be publishing notice on the date and it'll be on the website.
Do we have to change the motion from the first one?
We would have to go back and somebody, I think everybody voted in favor of that, so anybody could make a motion to reconsider that and change the, the date to the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Make a motion to reconsider, reconsider the-
By the way, we looked at the materials that was put in the packet and October 12th was the date on the, on the proposed schedule for the last December.
So, we did approve for Secoat, okay.
Is that what we, is that what we approved? I know we may have said at the, okay.
So, we are leaving at the 12th. Okay.
So, we need to, we need to change.
So, the first one we'll modify. So, this one we can do correctly as a 12th.
Okay, so I already made a motion.
Okay.
To make it October 12th.
Motion by trustee Shostak.
This split.
October 12th.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Then you need a motion to modify the other one?
Yes.
So, the, which would be item number six, lot split for 1836 to October 12th for public hearing.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
So, next we have, next we have approval for payroll and vouchers for September 12th. And we've all had a chance to look. If there are no changes, I'd look for a motion.
So, moved?
Moved by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the last is our motion to adjourn.
Hang on a quick sec.
He wants to do it.
Anyway, before we-
How about, what's that?
Actually, we're still in the meeting, right?
Yeah.
While we're checking out, I guess, some dates, I just want to remind everyone that September 14th is tax day. So, please have your taxes in, your property taxes before 5:30 this Wednesday.
Ending on a not fun note.
It's a great note.
So, for more clarity, so we checked at the, at the minutes and the proposal had the 12th changing, moving for Secoat. But at the board meeting, we made a motion to, to change that to the 10th because we didn't need to have that adjustment. And so, we had approved the schedule that included having Monday, the 10th as the board meeting.
Yeah, because we were sitting here.
So, do we make a motion to change the meeting or do we make a motion, or do we reconsider those other two motions?
I have a personal conflict now with the 10th because I was told that it was the 12th, so.
Well, I'm not going to be here the 12th, so whatever we want to do. But I, I really think-
So, it's been on the township website as the 12th, the 10th.
It was my mistake to assume that was different.
Since it was posted, I'm sure, in December.
If the meeting, if the meeting was approved as the 10th, then it, it should be the 10th. So, now we have to make new motions again. Let's just say the first meeting in October per Mark's suggestion.
Yeah, then we'll notice it properly for whichever one it happens to be.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to.
Either way is the proper timeline.
Hey, let me amend my motion for item number six, lot split for 1836 Del Rose Drive and have the public- Drive and have the public hearing the first meeting in October.
Okay. Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
By.
Oh, sorry, I.
By clerk Brooke. All in favor?
And technically that motion is to reconsider and to reopen discussion.
Correct. Yep, per the, um, per the original motion.
Okay.
Well, Mark, okay, well, Mark, what you're saying is what we're voting on is to reconsider it and then we still have to vote again.
Technically.
Okay.
Once the vote's taken, you need to reopen it. You need to.
This Michael Down in history is the weirdest meeting. He's shown as well. Okay, so motion to reconsider. Trustee Barnett, support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, do we have another motion to?
Yes, now I will make the motion for item six, lot split request for 1836 Del Rose Drive to, um, have public hearing first meeting in October.
Motion by trustee Barnett. Support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Do we have a motion to reconsider the next lot split?
So moved.
Motion by, uh, trustee Showstack.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then we'd need a motion to set that.
And a motion to set the, uh, to set the public hearing for the lot split request of 2171 to 2173 Klingon Smith, uh, for the first meeting in October.
Motion by trustee Showstack. Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And, uh, next we look for a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
Motion by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Motion to reconsider, motion to adjourn?
We're adjourned.